Ask your mama.
Cherry baby.
Tell her everything is alright.
Why don't you come on?
Put your red dress on.
Come on.
You look so fine.
Come on.
Move it nice and easy. Girl, you'll make me lose my mind.
Cherry. Cherry baby.
Baby.
Cherry baby.
Cherry, can you come out tonight?
Come, come, come out tonight. Come, come, come out tonight.
Cherry.
Come out tonight.
Cherry.
Come out tonight.
I took my troubles down to Madame Rue. You know that gypsy with the gold cap too? She's got a pad and a fitted floating vine. Selling little bottles of love potion number nine. I told her that I was a flop with chicks. I've been this way since nineteen fifty-six. She looked at my partner, she made a magnificent sign. She said, "What you need is love potion number nine." She bent down and turned around and gave me a wink. She said, "I'm gonna make it up right here in the sink." It smelled like turpentine and looked like Indian aid. I held my nose, I closed my eyes, I took a drink. I didn't know if it was day or night. I started kissing everything inside. But when I kissed the cop down, I fitted floating vine. He broke my little bottle of love potion number nine. I held my nose, I closed my eyes, I took a drink. I didn't know if it was day or night. I started kissing everything inside. But when I kissed the cop down, I fitted floating vine. He broke my little bottle of love potion number nine. Love potion number nine. Love potion number nine. Love potion number nine. Whoa, 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 whoa. Little, little pretty one, come on and talk to me. Lovely, lovely, lovely one, come sit down on my knee. Whoa, 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 whoa. Tell you a story that happened a long time ago. Little, little pretty one, I'm in a watchroom girl. Whoa, 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 whoa. Little, little pretty one, come on and talk to me. Lovely, lovely, lovely one, come sit down on my knee. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Save.
All of my love, all of my kissing. You don't know what you've been missing, oh boy.
Oh, boy.
When you're with me, oh boy.
Oh, boy.
The whole world can see that you are what I meant for me. All of my life, I've been waiting. Tonight, there'll be no hesitating, oh boy.
Oh, boy.
When you're with me, oh boy.
Oh, boy.
You ready?
Ready, ready.
Chris? Chris? Lights? Thank you. Okay. All right, we will go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Sanford City Commission for Monday, September twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. The first order of business is our legislative prayer by Bernard Johns of Connections Church, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Trip Two Forty-Two.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for these men and women who choose to lead and set aside their own wants, needs, and desires for those of the community, and we thank you for those in the community who come to advocate for you, and that everybody get a spirit of cooperation and peace and are able to work together. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
May you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor.
Thank you Pastor.
Thank you Scouts.
Thank you Scouts.
The Scouts will be joining us for a while. They're working on some merit badges. I had an opportunity to speak with them before the meeting. So we are happy to have them here. And we're going to go to... Proclamation for National Community Planning Month. So if I can have members of the Planning Department to come and join me. Is just you?
Oh, no, hold on a minute there.
You do most of the work anyway, right?
I was wondering what department that guy was with.
He's a floater.
Well, at least Ramondo's not here.
He's a floater.
Where is he? Why is he standing in the back? Doesn't he have to come up?
I think, I think they informed him he wasn't welcome. You're in this department now.
Come on Cathy.
Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning, strategic land use frameworks, and comprehensive, local, and site-specific planning help manage change in ways that expand opportunity and improve choices for how people live and work. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and planned implementation, along with consistent application of good planning principles. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the essential role of planning in every community, emphasizing how planners are uniquely positioned to lead equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery efforts, and to identify solutions to complex challenges related to housing, transportation, and land use. Whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professionals, planning and development community, along with local and regional planners serving the city of Sanford, and extend our sincere appreciation for their continued commitment to public service and ongoing improvement of our community. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month provides an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of citizen planners, including the members of the City of Sanford's Planning and Zoning Commission and Historic Preservation Board, whose time, expertise, and commitment have contributed meaningfully to the thoughtful growth, preservation, and improvement of the community. Now therefore, I, Art Woodruff, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of City of Sanford, do hereby recognize the month of October twenty-twenty-five as National Community Planning Month, and call upon the people of the City of Sanford to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this observance.
Can you get in?
I just wanted to thank and recognize the planning team. We have planners, inspectors, part of the engineering staff, administrative support, all here to represent the Planning Department. And I want to thank the Commissioners and the Mayor for constant support of our department to make Sanford a better place to live, work, and connect.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you, everyone. I know your honest job is not always easy. We appreciate everything you do for us.
They're so color coordinated.
Okay. I do not see Representative Plankton.
I'm sure it's all.
And we are going to do the prostate proclamation Saturday at West Side. So we'll go on to...
Mayor. I just wanted to let you know the minutes that you have are regular meeting minutes from August twenty-fifth. And also, for those of you who don't know, I hired a deputy city clerk. She's been here a week today, and this is Shanna Posey.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Happy to have you, Shanna.
What you can say is, "Welcome back."
Welcome back.
She used to be an employee.
She was an employee two, three years ago. And worked in the Finance Department.
Welcome back.
So why aren't the minutes done?
Yeah, right?
Well, I haven't got her trained there yet.
Wait a minute, what's happening?
Now she feels like she's really back.
Did you talk to the previous deputy city clerk before you came?
My previous sitter?
Okay, before we go further, Commissioner Britton will not be able to be at the meeting tonight. She'd ask that she be excused. If I can get a motion with that effect.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passionately. Speaking before the commission to facilitate public input, if you plan to speak on an item, please complete the yellow citizen's input form that you will find in the back and submit the form, to place the form in the basket at the back. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before the City Commission, during a regular meeting, before the consent agenda. I will ask if anyone wants to speak on an item during public hearings. There will be an opportunity before any motion is made. During regular items, if you have not turned in a yellow speaker form, if you would raise your hand when we get to that item, you will be recognized. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker on each item, except a person representing an organization during a quasi-additional hearing. It will be allowed five minutes. The disimpartation, which is after public hearings, is a time when citizens can address the commission on any topic not on the agenda, and there's a five-minute time limit for those comments. So we have, remind me again of the, we have September eighth.
August twenty-fifth, regular meeting minutes.
August twenty-fifth, regular meeting, and September eighth, work session and regular meeting.
No September eighth, no.
No September eighth, cool. Now I'm confused. So August twenty-fifth, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passionately. Okay, so next item is the second public hearing on the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six millage and the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. Declare the public hearing on the millage and budget open. This is the final public hearing on the City of Sanford's twenty-twenty-five millage and twenty-twenty-six budget. The proposed millage rate is seven point three-two-five, the same rate as last year.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, to the audience, we have Ms. Lindsay, Cindy Lindsay, our Finance Director, to give a brief presentation.
I don't have a presentation, but I just wanted to let you know that the seven point three-two-five is a six point eight oh four nine percent increase over the rollback rate of six point eight five eight three. And I'm open to any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions?
No new questions this time.
Not at all.
For the audience, I would like to know that the City Commission received the budget in July. They've had a number of meetings regarding it, so no questions now because their questions probably have already been answered, so.
It's been thoroughly vetted by staff, by the directors, by the city manager, and the commission.
Yes. All right, this is the public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to speak on the budget? Okay. See no one, I'll close the public hearing. First is Resolution Thirty-four Seventeen, and there is a correction in that resolution on the amount for approval of transfer of budget funds within departments, offices, or agencies of the city. Up to seventy-five thousand dollars per item can be approved by the city manager. So we have a motion on Resolution Thirty-four Seventeen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passionately. Resolution Thirty-four Eighteen, adopting the budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passionately. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
Thank you.
And once again, thank you, staff, for putting in the extra effort over the last couple of weeks, taking another look at it. That brings us to consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda? See no one, I'll bring that to commission, items A through K, unless somebody wants to pull something.
I'd like to pull B, E, and F.
B, E, and F?
Correct.
B as in boy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do we have a motion on A, C, D, G through K?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Passionately. Item B.
Okay, item B is about the agreement between the city and Lynx, and my only question there is, are we taking into consideration scout on this funding?
We are not, although I have had conversations with the county manager about their analysis, and we're going to be looking to do an analysis to see also if we think that we should continue with Lynx.
Okay.
In the conversation...
I figured that would be the answer, I just wanted to be sure.
In the conversation, I don't know if I had it with you, but with the county was, let's see how it goes with them, rather than jumping in before it's really set up.
Okay, agree.
Well, I would also like to say, we, this county has always struggled providing that service to our underprivileged communities, part of which are in Sanford. Yeah. I am concerned about this move to scout, and I furthermore don't want to see us reduce even more of the services that our people need.
Yeah, we're in absolute agreement about that.
Yeah, that's why. I don't think there's enough little scout vans around to service, but we'll see. We will see.
And we'll have a year to see how it works for them and whether it will work for us. But as it is, I mean, the funds we pay provide that bus that comes across from Goldsboro through Georgetown and out to the Health Clinic.
I don't want to get on a soapbox here, but...
Oh, go ahead.
But well-intended government decisions are not born in the communities that are affected by them. And so this may be a well-intended government decision by the county, but I'm not sure they communicated with the people that need it the most. And I know that those people are also not privy to exactly what this program is and how it's going to work, because they're not on Facebook.
Right, and that's why we will continue to have Lynx and not cancel anything.
Right. And the meetings they're having, the public meetings they're having, are in the middle of the day to talk about this.
Well, the opportunities that each of us have at meetings like Calno, we make it very clear what the priorities should be of scout, and if those aren't the priorities, then they will not be supported in that program.
Is Lisa Holder or Nico still here?
I found Nico walked back in.
Can...
No obvious people.
Ms. Ron Park, can you make sure that they're promoting this through our sites? I know all of those people won't be on social media, but many of them are. And so we should be promoting, it's a service that our residents can take advantage of. We should be promoting.
And it's free this month, and I think the more people test it, use it, the better kind of data we will have on whether or not it still does continue to satisfy the needs of our Sanford residents.
Okay. Anything else on B?
Nope.
Okay, E?
Uh, E is Cummings Generators. There's a statement here that says, "The goal of the division is to make certain that none of the city-owned lift stations, wells, or treatment plants go without generated power." This is not a new goal, I don't think.
No.
And if it was always the goal, we obviously have had incidents here.
I can, I can share some history with you.
Sure.
When Hurricane Charlie came through, I'm not sure we had generators for any of our lift stations.
Yeah.
And we're scrambling to find any rental units we could get, and so it's been a long-term project to either have permanently installed ones or ones that we can move around.
Okay.
So we can't afford to buy them all at one time.
Makes sense, thank you. That's good. And then finally, on F. I definitely support this idea and the systems. My only question here is, there was a statement that providing and installing new computers monitor software includes an upgrade from the twenty-twelve to the twenty-twenty-five version. Are we waiting too long between versions to upgrade? Anyone here can answer that. My friend Brent's gonna come up and give me just the answer I'm waiting for. That was not a threat, that was just a statement.
He wasn't here in twenty-twenty.
I know you weren't here then.
I'll give you an answer.
That's a long time between upgrades.
Good evening, Brent Johnson, Public Works and Utilities Director. So what happens when you have outdated software, you just create, keep creating patches to make it work, and you know this, I'm sure. You create backdoor patches to make it work for what you need it for, but we're at that point where we can no longer continue to create patches. We have to actually upgrade the servers and software, or the servers and hardware so that we can then upgrade the software.
So we didn't lose support because we waited that long?
Excuse me?
We didn't lose support from whoever owns the system?
No, no.
Okay.
But we're at that point, just like your phones, you get to a point where your phone will no longer accept certain updates, and you have to update your phone, the hardware. We're at that point, we have to update the hardware in order to upgrade the software.
Okay. Thank you, Brent.
Yeah, Mayor, you need to upgrade that flip phone.
Hey, look who has a laptop up here.
Yeah.
That's a PDA. That's a PDA.
Okay, I'm good, thank you. No more questions.
B, E, and F.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
See what you miss, Shanna, aye.
Any opposed? Passionately. Brings us to our first public hearing, first reading of ordinance forty-eight thirty-two, The Great Chicken Paper.
Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash four-eight-three-two, an ordinance of the City of Sanford, Florida relating to the keeping of chickens and amending Chapter Fourteen, Article One, subsection fourteen dash four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sanford, Florida, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for taking of implementing administrative actions, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for a savings provision, providing for codification, and Schrichner errors, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, city staff is requesting that you approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-eight thirty-two to modify Chapter Fourteen of the City of Sanford's Code of Ordinances to allow chickens in residential areas designated for single-family use.
I'm disappointed it's not titled The Austin Chicken Movement.
Right. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Commission. We've been down this road several times, and we decided we were gonna attempt, make our first attempt at codification, we were gonna look at this, and I think the primary focus is to tell you what you think of the rules and make the necessary adjustments. I will tell you in advance that I know there's a couple discrepancies in the paperwork. I'm not exactly, I think, I might be inventing a word here, transposition. When we transposed this stuff over, some of the numbers got messed up, we were messing with indentation, but the intent of this ordinance is to allow for six chickens, not four, three square feet per chicken, and five square feet of run. And so if you'll look, and it's B-seven, C-five, we intend to make the appropriate changes there for second reading, and, you know, contemporaneous with any recommendations that the commission might have for us.
How did you know the exact place I was gonna mention that?
Yeah, we...
GMTA.
On what I transmitted, Commissioner, is actually, it was still correct, but when we messed with the indentation, whatever happened.
So the number, the three-word is correct, the number and two is good.
Right.
That's what I thought.
But, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I followed you on Facebook, and I saw a comment on this, on this proposal. It was, it had something to do with the distance, and I should have written it down, but...
Somebody questioned that twenty feet seemed awfully close.
Right. Where did we come up with the twenty feet? Just...
Commissioner, you recall that we went out, we queried different municipalities and governments, and we built a policy model that was contemporaneous with those, those models as well, and that's where we got it from. So it's relatively arbitrary, the commission has the power to recommend adjustments.
Okay.
The other thing that I would just point out ahead of you, that we, you know, I don't, it feels unresolved in my mind, is the fee. We talked about this, and having skin in the game, and having an annual fee. Ultimately, I still think that that's probably the right direction to go, but the last time that we all met here and discussed it, it was a little ambiguous.
Well, I'm wondering if it's just an initial fee rather than an annual fee?
Yeah, 'cause...
Because if I understood it correctly, there's not definitely an annual inspection, there just might be an annual inspection. Right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, when we looked at the Grease program earlier, and I didn't remember those fees that are involved in that program, so I do believe that we over-fee ourselves, and so I am troubled by that, but I understand that, as you put it, it gives them skin in the game.
And I like the one-time fee, because then we know they're truly invested in doing this right.
I confess to you that I've been to Tractor Supply and looked at those cute chicks in that little warm coop, and I've thought about, man...
It's tempting.
But I'm not willing to pay a fifty-dollar fee and build that coop and do the things necessary to be a responsible chicken owner either.
Pay seven dollars an act?
Right.
What, so, I would just like, I would like it to be understood why we're doing this. I'm not sure we've discussed it enough.
Why we're allowing chickens?
Yeah, because for history's sake, years ago, we had an issue in this city with a pet pig, and we ended up having to force the family to get rid of their pet pig. And, and we ended up having to force the family to get rid of their pet pig. And so I know that we already have people in this city that have chickens, that don't follow the current rules. And unintended consequences have occurred and are going to occur to some of them. And especially the ones that are selling eggs.
Well, commercial purposes, commercial selling of byproducts of chickens and the chickens themselves would be prohibited by code
Right, right. So, so we went down this road to legalize chickens being able to be at your home with a little bit different, a little lighter restrictions than what we currently have. Currently, it's a hundred and fifty feet, right?
Which includes almost every house in Sanford.
Which makes it almost impossible for anybody in Sanford to ever have chickens. And so they're not allowed to have roosters, right?
That's correct, or any other foul, geese, ducks, whatever.
And so we are making these rules not to be an overreaching government, but to allow something to happen that, that is already occurring and, and is, is an okay practice for homeowners to have if they so desire. Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, I've had a number of people ask me about, you know, why don't we allow them? I was like, oh, we do allow them as long as they're a hundred and fifty feet away, which is basically not allowing them. I've also, since this has come up, been told, you know, this is a city, you don't grow chickens in the city. But people do, and, you know.
Yeah, I just had the opportunity to talk to one of our citizen academies and it was interesting to hear the different perspectives sitting in the room. One of the big things that we see in the news right now is predation, predators. You know, we've had some team members that have actually lost pets to coyotes. And there's a reasonable fear that as, as our wildlife areas decrease and are developed on, that those predators are gonna move into other areas that they're not currently in and certainly be attracted by, among other things, chickens. And one of the, you mentioned unintended consequences, the unintended consequence could be that you let little fluffy out in the backyard
Right.
and the worst happens.
Right.
Back to the distance, if you think about, you know, our, our subdivision standards, you know, we've got five and seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks
Right.
in, in most subdivisions. So even if it's seven-and-a-half, twenty puts you close to the middle of your, you're getting close to the middle of your backyard.
Right.
So there's only a little bit of room to move back and forth there anyway.
Yeah, yeah. But we still have a lot of larger properties, older properties, rural, that are in the city and I think this is good. And I, I appreciate all the work you've done. I know I give you grief about other stuff you've done, but, but you did really good on this one.
Thank you. All right, anything else for Mr. Ramondo? Okay, thank you, this is the public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak to this? Okay, then I'll bring in the Commission and the motion is to approve, it would be with the corrections to the numbers.
Yeah, and sorry, Tony, there was one other sentence that it probably would be a good idea to correct because it could be misconstrued. In that same section not far past where the numbers were, subsection two. Just see how this reads to you. "No perceptible odor shall be objectionable to neighboring properties emanating from the chickens or the enclosure." To me, that reads, that means that they, they can't object to any odor. So I think we need to rewrite that so it's a little more clear.
Okay, my brain heard it a little bit.
There should not be any perceptible odor that a neighbor would think is objectionable. You know what I mean?
There's no perceptible and objectionable.
Right, I, I think that it has to be, we'll throw both adjectives in there because we can smell the presence of the chickens but not be bothered by it.
Or just make it, "There shall be no perceptible odor that is objectionable to neighboring properties."
We'll clean it up, Commissioner, thank you for that suggestion.
Great.
To approve with said changes.
Yeah. Second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Any opposed? Pat Nastly, I don't have any requests for citizens' participation, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Commission on any item not on the agenda? Okay, four.
How we doing tonight? A little under the weather. Tonight, just wanna discuss the process, I'm sorry, Chase Spore, four thirty-six South Scott, Sanford Avenue, Scott Avenue, Sanford, Florida, three-two-seven, seven-one. Want to discuss the process that has been unfolding concerning twelve-nineteen Park and how it undermines our public trust and how this city is currently operating. August seventh, Planning and Zoning Commission held a full public hearing. Staff made their case, I made mine, citizens voiced their opinion, and the Commission unanimously approved the application without condition. August fourteenth, City Staff completes the development order and sends it for legal review. Now at that point, the process had worked as intended. Decision was made, process was fairly implemented. That's also where the story changed and a new narrative was, first appeared. Reconsideration was somehow considered in my best interest and for clarity and for efficiency. Without this process, it was said that staff would drag me back to P and Z Commission months later, four or five months later even, causing delay after delay after delay.
Who, excuse me, who said that?
Ms. Green mentioned it in the work session.
She didn't say four or five months later.
No. I, I never heard her say that you would be dragged back four or five months later.
It would've been brought back if there was a disagreement between the
That's right, it would've been brought back if there was a disagreement.
Correct.
So your objections were drug. Okay. This record, however, is very clear that this is not the case. From Eileen's very own words during the original meeting, without these conditions being added back in, the very commissions, the very conditions that the Commission intentionally chose to leave out, staff would have no authority to bring back to the Commission. When we get down to it, staff were so certain the case would be denied, so certain that they knew what was best for Sanford. They didn't even prepare their alternate approval with their usual standard conditions. When the gamble failed, they were left to claw back the leverage they lost. The development order, which was already completed, then sat in the Attorney's Office for three weeks until this reconsideration could be teed up. We were asked to believe that a Commissioner, absent from the original hearing, just happened to go back and listen to the recording, became so disturbed by what they heard that they went and discovered Sanford's unique reconsideration rule, one that has never been used in P and Z Commission. And in the five minutes of that very meeting, after the prevailing member had already left, they proceeded to raise the motion. It was then carried by another absent member, who then immediately announced she would recuse herself from the actual October second vote due to conflict. Does this look like efficiency for me and the applicant? Or does it perhaps look like a process that is being managed and coached along the way to this reconsideration? Commissioner Britton raised a real concern for one of her constituents, as she always does. And then she was directly told in both the working session and the Commission meeting that this reconsideration was necessary for myself to fix the errors of the Commission and City Staff. And respectfully, this is absolutely incorrect and wrong. Staff cannot bring it back to P and Z Commission without those conditions being added back in. The development order currently is to be enforced through engineering standards, building standards, and code enforcement. When the public starts to see staff reframing a unanimous decision, attorneys defending it with explanations that don't match the record, it is apparent that we are being manipulated towards a preferred result. It erodes trust not only in staff, but in the independence of every one of our citizens' commissions. To protect the integrity of the votes as well as the trust of the citizens we represent, reconsideration should be not used as a tool to manufacture leverage against its citizen. If these conditions are truly to be standard, then codify them in the ordinance. Don't slip them in through procedural maneuvering. Because if reconsideration is to be used in this way, then no decision will be final and it doesn't serve the citizen, it simply attempts to manage them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna respond, and at some point you may tell me that I'm getting myself in trouble, but I take your advice in advance. I listened to the meeting more than once. The motion was not approved with no conditions, it was based on the testimony. And in your testimony, you did a very good job of explaining each of the details, many of which were in question, of the engineering plan was gonna be done, the signed landscape plan was gonna be done, the trees were gonna go in, all of the things that I think staff, a lot of the things staff had been asking for, you stated on the record, which was part of the motion. And so to say that there were no conditions and that staff was going to rearrange this to get it back so they could add conditions, the conditions were already there in my mind.
So the standard conditions were applied.
Wait, wait, let me finish. And I, my bet is there is no one up here that doesn't want this to happen. And everyone wants this project to go through. But we have to make sure we maintain the standards that we have for property. And we have to know whether those are being included or not when a project comes forward. Okay, attorney?
I was just gonna add, again, that this issue may ultimately come before you Mayor and Commissioners, and so that was just something that I wanted to add. With regard to Mr. Spore's comments, many of which are frankly inaccurate, because what you're attempting to do is impugn some sort of theory that someone else is involved in this process. I've had numerous conversations with you, usually within five minutes of you emailing me, I'm in contact with you. I've made myself available to meet with you no less than six times. I've made myself available to confer with you, to confer with staff, to make sure any questions that you have as to the process, as to what those conditions may or may not be, that you have my time to do that. Sitting here today, you still have not set a meeting.
Submitted to staff, we're waiting to find a date that applies as soon as you send it.
Again, I, I don't talk over you, so please don't talk over me. So I've always, sitting here today, you still have not set a meeting with me to address any concerns that you may have. I also addressed at the initial meeting when you came before, at the last session, what was the purpose of the process, the way that you've described the process, I understand your perception of it, it's inaccurate from my point of view. At the end of the day, my goal remains the same, which is to make myself available to answer any questions that you may have so that we can reach a fruitful conclusion to this matter. So I will again state to you that I will make myself available along with staff, because what I've said to you on that no less than six times is not only meet with staff, but I would also meet with you with staff, and I've made that offer again and again and again. So now it is up to you to decide whether you want to take advantage of it so that you can get to the place that you say that you want to be.
And since you said meet with staff, I reached out to staff and we've been working it out so we can all meet together. It has not happened yet, we're all busy trying to make it happen, so it hasn't been ignored. And I asked direct questions where they're not answered. And I get that you represent the city, not me. And I asked direct questions and they weren't answered. I asked multiple people for the actual conditions we're talking about, everyone in the City Staff, Art and yourself, so they cannot be answered. Maybe in a one-on-one meeting that we're trying to put together. And I even asked for the, the ordinance where it says that P and D can bring it back to the P and Z Commission, and that was still unanswered. And we still haven't had the actual spot in the ordinance where the reconsideration was there. You mentioned Rule thirteen of the City Commission, that's not actually where the power lies, I did find where it was on my own.
Again, that's also where, where your, your comments are inaccurate, because when I responded to you, your only response to me was thank you. And as to anyone not answering your question, that is why I've asked to be there so that you cannot now come and say that your questions have not been answered when I've offered you a forum to do that, again, no less than six times. So if you want to do that, again, get you to the place you say you want to be, then I will make myself available so that we can have a meeting with staff so you are no longer able to say that your questions are not being answered. And that's the best I can do for you.
I've asked everyone in City Staff for the conditions that are in argument. They were clearly answered in response, in email, that they will not be answered till the end of the day on Thursday, giving me three business days where they had ninety to formulate an argument against me. I'll have three business days to respond to them once again. I was told I can't present any new information, but they can have a whole new summary when I'm supposed to sit back there and just take a new summary. And all I'm saying, it is being reframed, like framed, that it's somehow in my benefit. And right now, without that condition, on standard condition three, section E, they are not allowed to have that authority. And if we believe that's a standard condition, then codify it and stop adding it to a standard condition at the end of the approval process.
Mr. Spore, what's undisputed in everything that you've said is that you haven't met with me. Get there, so that I can get you where you need to be.
It's in the process, but the clock is running.
Well, the clock, I offered that the day after the last meeting.
And it was started
So it's been over two weeks.
So
It was already started.
This is no longer a fruitful conversation. So
Thank you, Mayor.
I look for, I look forward to this getting solved.
Me too.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the Commission? Okay, then we will go to other items, procurement from Petroleum Traders, Mr. Ramondo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, City Staff is requesting Commission approval for fuel services for the fiscal year of twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six for all City vehicles from Petroleum Traders Corporation for the amount of one million, one hundred thousand dollars.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pat Nastly, procurement for Alan J. Fleet Sales?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, City Staff is requesting Commission approval for the purchase of twenty-five police vehicles from Alan J. Fleet Sales of Sanford for the Sanford Police Department in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Questions or motion?
To approve? I'm sorry, I just wanted to address one issue with this.
I'm sorry, Chief. Can we go second?
A second. Again, on, on the Mayor's page where he, he shares
I explained it.
He shares what, what, what we're gonna be talking about. There was a question about why are we replacing vehicles at the hundred-thousand-mile mark? I just thought it would be good for us to have, you mentioned, okay, well, sorry to overstep you.
No, that's okay.
So What is the sta, what is the standard and why do we do this? Please, I know the answers, but I, I just wanna discuss.
Commissioner, we generally replace those vehicles based on Bart Brent from Fleet's recommendation.
Okay.
The other part of that is that when we do this, it's about reselling those vehicles and making sure that we get some value out of the vehicles when we resell them.
Okay.
It's a fair question for the benefit of the public.
Yes. So a police car mile is harder than a, a private vehicle mile?
A mayor mile.
Yes. Yes, okay, thank you. So a motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pat Nastly, budget transfer for Afroflow?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, City Staff is requesting your approval for a budget transfer and to award the construction services for Afroflow train project for the North Water Reclamation Facility for Seagrass in the amount of one million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Questions or motion?
Which, I'm sorry, which plant is this?
The north one.
Our favorite.
All right.
Can, can you, can you come up for a minute, please?
And you're gonna ask about everything tonight, aren't you?
Well
It's his turn, it's usually me.
You know, I'm not sure I'm ever gonna run for office again, but, but while I'm still here
You might as well do the job.
I, I just think we need to do a better job of explaining what in the hell we're doing. And so that's all I'm trying to do. So, Mr. Johnson, the issues with this plant are well-known and we've been blasted one side to the other. Is this addressing those issues?
Not necessarily plant-related. So the Acta Flow system is a system where we pull water from Lake Monroe, we treat it, and then push it out as reclaimed water.
Okay.
So this gives us, you know, we've had over the past eight, nine, ten months, we've had issues with providing reclaimed water. So this is an alternative method for us.
A fix for that problem?
For that problem, yes.
So, the other problem at that plant, is there a plan, because you're still pretty new here? You inherited some issues, and you are addressing them, and is there a plan that you're coming up with to keep some of these parts available for replacement? Because the word that I've heard is that, you know, some of this stuff is on order, we're waiting for parts, we're waiting for this, waiting for that. Do we have a plan moving forward where maybe we could have some of these parts available, or is that not practical or feasible?
Well, so that is a part of my plan. If you'll remember, I put in for a position request for this upcoming budget year for, well, we haven't necessarily given an official title yet, but basically it's an inventory specialist.
Okay.
And that inventory specialist will be in charge of stocking and storing all of those normal, routine parts and pieces that we use.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about that, but, but I wasn't sure, and I wanted it on the record, if it included some of this big stuff. Because to me, this is a big stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure you keep an extra odor control unit.
No, so there's bigger, there's certain bigger things that we would not store and keep. It's more of your pumps, your more normal, routine things.
Right.
Pumps, smaller parts, but things like repair the Acta Flow system, no, that's a major construction capital project.
Well, but that's why I wanted to have this discussion, because to some, well, I don't understand why they just don't keep all these extra parts on hand.
Yeah.
No.
Like, we keep extra vacuum pumps on.
Yeah, we keep a lot of pumps, we keep just a lot of those, like I said, routine things on hand, but, you know, we're not going to keep an electrical panel, you know, on hand, because those are made for each individual system, and those are custom ordered. So there's certain things that we don't need to keep, they don't break down routinely, and they're expensive.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
And you do have, there are quite a few items in the capital improvement plan that average citizen isn't going to be looking at, that do tell us that you are looking toward the future, to put the right kind of money in the right places, so that we can try to at least get a little beyond just the band-aiding that appears.
Exactly, and this is one of those steps, you know, we have another thing that we're looking at to improve our reclaimed water service, and that involves some work at Site 10, so we're looking at alternative ways to make sure that we can continue to supply reclaimed, as well as make all the necessary plant improvements.
And we'll continue to get the word out pretty quickly, when we know we have issues, and we can tell the public why we're having the issues, and what's being done about it.
So.
I think we're trying to do that.
Can I ask one more question? Yes.
Reclaimed.
Yes.
Many of us in the city don't even have that.
Yes.
That's a major undertaking?
It is, so it's supplied in a lot of the newer areas of the city. As we are allowed to, or have the ability to install reclaim, we will, but unfortunately, it is not something that is supplied to the entire city.
Well, we currently, to be frank, we currently struggle to provide it.
Right, we don't have enough.
Right, because we don't have these.
To the ones we have.
Right, because we don't have these alternative systems in place, like the Acta Flow, like the return pump system from Site 10 to repump back into the system, so, but once we get these things back into place, we shouldn't have any issues supplying reclaimed water.
I'm sorry, did these are?
Now I've got a question. So, is there a place where people can look to see if the reclaim system is up? Because I frequently see messages on social media that, you know, I turned on my reclaimed water, and it just trickles out.
That's a good.
Yeah, it's amazing how quickly people take something that's.
That's a good dashboard, that's a good dashboard to be added.
Has there been a problem lately?
So the problem that we, it's funny, because we had that conversation this morning in my office, and one of the things that we're finding is, we're having contractors in different, you know, areas throughout the city, that have issues with reclaim, so they'll turn off a valve to fix something, but they don't turn the valve back on, which they really shouldn't be turning a valve off, it should be our utility staff turning off those valves. And so we've been getting some of those issues, where people just take it upon themselves to turn off our valves, and then they don't turn them back on, and so we have them go and hut those valves down, because there's no system that tells us what valve has been shut off, unfortunately. I don't think there's a system out there that's quite that sophisticated, but, so we have to then go and hut those down and figure it out.
Well, but I'm curious, if there's a way to put that on our website, when we are aware that there are issues, to help answer.
Well, we do have a, so not, not just individual isolated incidents, we don't, we get the call, we generally go out, and within, you know, a day or so, we get it back up and working. But for those instances where we do have reclaimed issues, we do put notices on the website when.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So if I don't see that notice, I can assume that's a, an isolated issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Although it's not a bad idea to maybe have something on the dashboard that just indicates where we do have reclaimed water service.
As far as where we, where we offer it in general?
Right.
Oh, okay, we can look at that.
Kind of like, oh.
Right.
Because we'll keep adding it.
We can certainly look at that. All right.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, in lieu of some of the audience paper, you can explain what reclaimed water is?
Reclaimed water is basically wastewater that's been treated to a standard that allows us to then allow people to use it to water their grass and their plants, but it is not, it has not been treated to the point where it's considered potable or drinkable water, just purely for landscaping purposes.
Where does most of the reclaimed water come from?
The wastewater plant.
In other words, when they flush the toilet?
When you flush the toilet, or send water down the sink, or the dishwasher, or your washing machine, that water then comes to the wastewater plant, where it's treated, as I stated, to the point where the quality is well enough for us to put it in the reclaim system for you all to then use it for irrigation purposes, and it must be added that it is cheaper to use than drinking water.
Right.
So it's good for your plants, but don't drink it.
Do not drink it.
Not good for your hair either, Lord, right?
Don't drink the water. Yeah, look what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Did we have a motion a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Brent.
Nancy Lee? Resolution 3419.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Commission, city staff is requesting your approval of budget amendment and procurement services in the amount of $124,190 to CPH Incorporated for the post-design engineering services for the Georgetown Sewer Upgrades Phase A1.
And that's storm order, right? Okay, all right. Questions or motion?
No, this is a good one.
This is a continuing project of what's already happening.
Yeah, this is, in addition. Yeah, so they're starting up Phase 1A.
All right, move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Question, Nancy Lee? Resolution 3420.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of City Commission, city staff is requesting that you approve an amendment to the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Transportation Transformation Plan to develop the former Castle Brewer Court Public Housing Site as a mixed-use, mixed-income development that includes commercial use, residential, I mean, retail and home ownership housing. And I would point out that there's representatives of the Sanford Housing Authority, as well as the developer here.
And I'll point out, we discussed this earlier at the workshop with all those individuals, and.
Move to approve.
I have no more questions about that.
Second.
All right. Yeah, and our discussion centered around, you know, that we wished we wanted, we wish we could have more owner-occupied housing, but the market is just not supporting that, and we just need housing.
And they got the money to get it.
And there's money to do this.
Yes.
So, okay.
I guess so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question, Nancy Lee? Procurement to Neil Schaefer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, city staff is requesting your approval of Resolution 3421, to approve of the procurement of 100% of the dredging design and permitting, and 100% dock replacement design, permitting the Sanford Downtown Maria in the amount of $1,312,057 to Neil Schaefer Incorporated.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, wait. I'm just, I'm just glad we're to this point. I'm so glad we're to this point. Questions or motion?
Yeah.
I.
If you make a motion, I'm going to talk about it.
Okay, move to approve.
Second. Okay, so, we have been, I think it's three years to the day, wasn't it? When Ian had? Okay, so, close to it. And so for three years, we have been trying to work with FEMA on this, and it has been very frustrating, and our staff has worked very hard, and, you know, FEMA, FEMA's tasked with doing a lot of things and protecting our tax money, but we fully believe that this is deserving of full reimbursement. We are finally to the point where they've approved some money. Craig's going to tell me if I'm not getting this right. They've approved some money, 6.4 million, for the dredging. They have not approved the rest of it, but we are to the point where we can start the rest of it while we appeal the process, appeal their other findings.
Right.
Is that correct? So, we are moving forward, but it could take a year for, a year or more for design and permitting to take place, because of the number of permitting agencies we have to go through. So, despite the fact that we are finally, almost three years later, starting the actual design work, we still have a long way to go.
And is, is there any other mechanism in place to fund this project if FEMA isn't going to reimburse it?
Well, we have the money set aside in our reserves, so we can pay for it.
Okay.
We would like to be reimbursed.
I just.
We are looking into a state appropriation, but that would not be for the repair part, that would be for some of the improvement parts that we wanted to do. I have spoken with Corey Mills' aide, and Senator Scott's aide, and they would like us to meet with them some more, and see if they can provide us some assistance with FEMA. Corey Mills' office has already approached FEMA about it. But, bottom line is, and, and I had said this to Craig, you know, let's, let's, you know.
Keep going.
Let's cut off FEMA and just, we've got to get it done. We can't, we cannot leave it like it is. We've got to do it.
Yeah.
And if FEMA's not going to support us, we still have to do it. But I was lucky that the day I said that, I think is the day we had found out that there was approval enough that we could move forward. And they worked, they worked under the direction of the Stafford, you are entitled to ask that. So I know we have, we have heard a lot of complaints from our residents about this, and it's been very difficult for us.
Well, and I even want to understand. I want to understand that we, quite a while ago, contracted someone to help us get help from FEMA.
Right.
That's, that's how ridiculous some of these processes are.
We're, we're paying two consultants to help us work with FEMA. So, all right? Any other questions? Mr. Radzak, did I cover that pretty well? Okay.
Good, Mayor.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question, Nancy Lee? Thank you for joining us, Scouts.
Thank you, Scouts.
Thank you for having us.
Yes. They stayed for the whole meeting, that's impressive.
Okay, city attorneys report.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
City clerks report. You gave us some.
I was going to say, I have, the last meeting, I mentioned I was not getting any applications.
Well, you made up for it.
And now you got some?
I, IT and I worked together and found them, and so we're a little behind. I'd just like to know if you want to do interviews the next work session?
Because now we have some competition.
How many, how many openings do we have for?
We have, what?
Airport.
One.
There's more than one.
We.
We reappointed.
We reappointed.
Yeah, so there's.
Everyone that was eligible to be reappointed, so that just left Mr. Robertson's seat open. Housing Authority, I think, two.
There are two.
There are two on the Housing Authority?
Yep.
I believe so, yes.
George and Marana.
No vacancies.
Yeah, I believe there's.
Two vacancies.
I believe three for historic preservation.
I see six.
No, that's how many's avail, that's how many seats are open.
Vacancies, three vacancies?
She's counting vacants.
Okay.
So, however, you want to move forward with it?
Work session?
I often feel bad bringing them in for five minutes. But I also understand wanting to put a face with the name.
A lot of these folks, I don't know. Well, but some I can narrow down. See, this one, West Side, on the airport, and there's a couple good people.
Yeah, there's several applicants for that as well.
The airport.
What's?
Do we have a CDBG opening?
Yes. They, I believe they all need to be reappointed, because they're just a two-year.
They're two that termed out, but we're going to talk about.
Right.
Yeah. Both of them want to come back.
Well, I can definitely vouch for the CDBG applicant.
Well, one missed by the two that termed out want to come back, correct?
What, two of the people that have termed out want to come back? And I think they're both my appointments.
Yeah.
Right?
I know Shane.
On those, we, we make appointments, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure I'm ready to jump in and appoint anyone tonight. But I also feel bad about calling everybody in for interviews.
I don't like that.
Okay, can we?
So how are we going? Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was.
Do you want to reach out to them individually? Speak to them?
Well, or come back next meeting, talk and see if we want to call people in for interviews. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I just need a little time to go out and do some research.
Mr. Wiggins, you're looking like you don't like that idea.
It's only one spot, and I see a couple good people for airports.
Yeah.
Have you looked at all of them?
Yeah.
We just got them. I will look at them. Yeah.
But.
The last time you gave us this many to choose from, I went home and did some research and made some calls, and I was ready. But, can we approve any tonight, that where there's not that many people for a few spots?
I don't see any I can approve right now.
Yeah, let's, can you send us out, or let's just, it was one airport.
Yes.
I can send out.
We need a list.
I'll send it out.
Okay. One airport, three HPB, two CDBG, I don't know what else.
Historic preservation.
Okay.
You did that one already.
And then.
But, Mayor of CDBG, you're going to choose those two, right? Those are your two for you.
But we were supposed to talk about term limits.
Yeah.
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 So, on our work session, next meeting, we need to talk term limits. And discuss board appointments. Are there any boards, and I'm looking at Eileen because I think two of them, you're, are you to the point where you have to have some appointments? Or can your boards operate for another month? Yes.
Yes, they do.
We didn't have you.
Okay, Wednesday, next HPB? Okay, so we meet before...
So you have time.
We meet before their next meeting? Okay. All right, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for me.
I put my agenda down in here somewhere. Are we just city manager's report? Is that the one next? City manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, um, just simply that my wife and I would like to thank you for the support and the loss of our daughter, so thank you.
Glad you're back.
Welcome back. Okay, so, city commissioner reports, Commissioner Wiggins.
Yeah, on, on top of that, man, as I told you, and I'll say it publicly, my condolences and prayers, and I love you. You tell your wife that too, okay? Um, my Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, uh, my community meeting is at, uh, Dr. Vildman Westside Community Center at, uh, six P.M. This Thursday, uh, not just for my district, if anyone else wants to come out in, in the other part of the city, you're more than welcome. Um, food giveaway is going to be at Mother Wilson Park, Academy Manor, which is going to be at, uh, three P.M. Anyone you know that needs groceries, please send them on out. The men's, uh, health huddle, um, which is, uh, dealing with men's health, but also touching base on prostate cancer. Um, we're going to have, um, to get some of the men out, I know, uh, Summer City Staff, Razak, um, Bonaparte, he might do the three on, I mean, three-point contest. We're going to have three-on-three, and, uh, we're going to have, uh... We're going to have...
I said I was being observant.
But, but everybody is more than welcome, and said also to Dr. Vildman Westside Community Center, and it's going to be from nine to twelve. Please tell all men, and hopefully all you men can come out as well, um, we're going to have a great time talking about our men's health, so that we take care of ourselves. That's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Austin.
Uh, due to the, uh, attendance that's here this evening, uh, I would like to, um, say that I recently reached the one-year anniversary of my stroke and not being able to walk, and it's been a long battle, and the battle continues. Uh, but many of you up here have been very supportive and helpful through that adventure, and I want to publicly thank all of you. And, uh, and the fight continues, and, and thank you all for your support, and, um, and it means the world to me. Thank you.
You ain't going to no bro.
Happy anniversary, Patrick.
Commissioner Tom.
Uh, just a couple of things, I had the pleasure of joining Robert Utsey at our Mayfair Country Club. Got to get inside there again, we met with a representative from the Arnold Palmer Foundation to discuss some of the framed photos that will go up in there. And it's going to be a nice gallery of not only Palmer, but other people who played there, early PGA professionals, LPGA founding members, there will be those up there as well. And they are on schedule, which is fabulous, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, I also did the city podcast with Lisa Holder and Nico, and, uh, I think that went well, they said there have been quite a few hits on that, and so they'll be working their way around to the you other guys too, so you can do the podcast. Videos really make a difference, I think your, your public will like that. Uh, I also attended the Fire Station Forty, our new fire stations, uh, celebration there, and that was wonderful to see the chief, the firefighters that were there, the folks doing the construction. Uh, they even hooked me up on the, uh, lift there to, after a few attempts, get up and sign the beam, so that's exciting, we're also looking forward to that. And then I attended the ribbon cutting for Parva, which is a Colombian cafe restaurant, best coffee I think I've ever had. Parva is a wonderful place, it's down on Seventeen Ninety-two, just north of the Seminole State College there, so highly recommend it. Also met the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce gentleman who was here earlier, and, uh, shout out to you wherever you are now.
Is that a new Parva?
Yeah, it's a new Parva. There's one in Deland, Lake Mary, I think has one.
They've been in Sanford for years, they're at Lake Mary Boulevard in Seventeen Ninety-two.
That particular one just had a ribbon cutting.
They've been there for years.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, well then you know how good they are. Okay, cool. Um, on the twenty-sixth, I'll be attending the first Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Meeting, so we're on one of their committees to help get Tallahassee to pay attention to what we need here on a municipal basis. So there will be more meetings to come on that, and, uh, we'll, uh, continue to get input from my fellow commissioners and the mayor and citizens on what we think is important for Tallahassee to know from a legislative perspective, and that's all we have. Oh, and Mayor, um, city manager Bonaparte, we're glad to have you back.
Um, okay, a couple of things, first of all, that the Best of Sanford Awards, um, the city of Sanford, and I forgot to bring the plaque in, was named the best city in Seminole County, which we already knew.
All right.
But, we did receive that award, um, and I gave a key to the city to, um, Perla. And had her family come up, um, and she had family here from the Dominican Republic, and she was, um, quite moved by that, and it, um, and by, the audience was very appreciative of that. Um, I did attend the Advent Health, um, ER, uh, ribbon cutting and spoke at that, um, very nice facility, um, eight months from first shovel to, um, completion. Um, no, that's not right, because it's an hour, it's a year, right? Okay.
The groundbreaking is the day I went into the hospital and had my stroke.
Right.
I went from the ground...
And you remember that day?
I went from the groundbreaking...
That's right.
To the ER on, on, uh, Reinhardt, uh, and then, and then was moved to Altamont.
That's right.
Yeah. So, maybe...
Well, now there's an ER there if you need it.
It's closer, it's closer to the house. It's in District Three.
Hopefully you won't need it.
Yeah. Um, but, you know, it's a great, uh, it's a great investment by Advent in our city, uh, they are great community partners, maybe they can be greater now that they are in the city. Um, and it, and it's a long-needed facility for that part of Sanford.
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing from there all the way out to, you know, Deltona, Oakdale.
You know, it's not the same drive it used to be, uh, Mayor, from one side of Sanford to the other.
Right.
And, uh, and so driving even to the hospital for parts of the city is, is long, so, uh, it's great to have Advent over there.
Um, kudos to our utilities department, public works department, on the, um, fast response, on the sewer line break and getting that company in and getting that repaired. I, um, ironically got to visit both, um, ends of the construction project last night, um, and we, um, over the water line break. So, um, anyway, you know, the, the amount of work and organization I know it's taking to get that done is much appreciated.
Do you mean the wastewater?
Yeah, sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, over by Wicklow.
Okay.
So, um, quite an operation to get that done. Um, air show, um, Brady has been helping me, um, work something with them, um, oh, Brady's still here, and so we're still hoping to, to finalize some things with them. But the chief has brought to our attention that there will be an added request to provide escort for the Thunderbirds, which could be an expense of four to five thousand dollars, and to make sure that we are supporting the, the Thunderbird, Birds, I would like us to, um, commit to covering that in the police department's budget if it is not included in the, um, cost to the air show.
Absolutely.
So, do we need a vote on that, or is consensus stood with you?
Cindy, what's the best way to do that?
Since we don't know for sure what...
Carrie, Carrie has that much left, Carrie, we'll take it by Carrie, using her mind of her own.
District Two says...
Until we know for sure what it is, do we need to...
Does it need to go in, can we just make it to come from contingency and not the police budget?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Final approval or prior approval?
Yeah.
Okay, but prior would be a guess, after would be a known amount.
Right. After is what I'm hearing you say, yeah. So once we know whether it happens or not, we can do that.
No, 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 no.
All right?
No, it, it's going to be, all right, never mind. We, we're not going to know how many hours, we're not going to know the cost ahead of time.
He's, the chief has told me it would be between four and five thousand dollars.
Right, between, so we don't know the amount.
Right, so once it's over, we'll make the transfer if necessary.
Okay.
Well, rather than just coming from the police budget, to have something separate.
Yeah, so it's not coming from his, his budget. Okay. Um, thank you, I was sorry, I missed the, um, fire station topping out. Mr. Thomas, I'm glad you were able to attend that for us, um, and if there are no other...
Didn't you have another ribbon cutting?
Oh, that's right, I, I did go to the Brulando, uh, ribbon cutting on Friday, which is why I missed the Arva one.
Yes, we covered two between us.
And so had a chance to speak there and, um, you know, what, uh...
I said Parva.
He said Parva. Oh, that's because I didn't type the whole thing in my phone.
See?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Um, anyway, glad to have them there, you know, they're doing a fantastic job overall as a company.
Was the food good?
The food is, the food at Brulando is excellent.
Is it? Okay.
It is.
I knew you ate there.
Um, actually, I had taken my, my son and daughter and their friends there, um, the week before, because they wanted to go out with me, and we went to the, um, theater.
What?
Yeah, me and, um...
Your grown kids want to be seen there?
Yeah, yeah, twenty, some twenty-somethings, and, uh, so, yeah, I'm, I'm still cool. Uh, with that, wear a jern.
We need to the jern.